Please have a seat. I'm gonna attempt to try and start this at seven. Unfortunately, Johns Creek is a lot like going to a Braves game, the people show up late. So, last time we had a lot of people, I thought it was only like a handful and I turned around later and they were standing in the lobby. So, to be fair to all the candidates, just take a quick second here. Erin Elwood is on the left here, Judy LaFay is in the middle, and Isser Yang is on the end. The concept here is the first half hour, 10 minutes for each candidate to step up and you'll get introduced to who they are, what they're about, their dream for the city. And I provided them all with four questions, the most popular ones ever get. And so I will give them a five-minute hand signal, we hit rich that part. And then when they stop, I will ask them each question one at a time. What I like about this format is this is the most time you will get to see any of these three talk. It should be about a half hour each time over this hour and a half. So that's kinda why I wanna start it on top, alright? We'll go according to the first name, alphabetical order. So Erin, because she's double E, there's gonna be another one. Is that turned off?
I think, oh, sorry. You have to like hold it weird. So if you can't hear me, please make a hand signal or something. Alright, so my name is Erin Elwood. Thank you all for coming out tonight. I know the city is gonna benefit from your engagement in this process, and so thank you for your time. I am running for city council because I want to live in a city that values community-focused governance, by which I mean a city council that builds our parks, supports our city center, promotes our culture, and does all of these things while protecting the environment that is our shared home. You know, city stuff. In the first few years after the city was incorporated, there was a lot of work to do to get the city on track and have a good foundation. I feel like we've gotten there and now we've been in kind of a holding pattern, trying to figure out what direction is the city going to go in. And I wanna be part of that conversation in helping the city form its identity and look to the future. I've only lived in Johns Creek for five years, but I plan to live here for the next 30 years. As I raise my family and live here hopefully until I retire, and then we'll see what happens after that. About myself, I grew up in Harrison, Tennessee. It's a rural area outside Chattanooga, in the unincorporated Hamilton County. And we have a river and we have a creek. And when I hear Isser and others talk about growing up in Johns Creek and what it was like before the development explosion in the 90s, I hear the nostalgia in their voice and I feel it as well, because that's the environment I grew up in. And my husband and I lived in Sandy Springs for 10 years, before we, before I got pregnant, before we decided to raise our family. And so we were very careful in thinking about where we wanted to settle down. We knew the metro area very well by this point. And we specifically chose Johns Creek, of course, because of the schools, but also because it was the place that reminded me of home. We have a river in our backyard, we have walking trails and woods, and we have natural beauty that is an amazing resource. So when I talk about protecting the environment, that is really important to me. I talk a lot about commercial revitalization, building a city center, and engaging in development that would be towards our long-term benefit as a city, but never at the expense of our environment and playing to our strengths of the resources that we have. After I left Chattanooga, I moved to Georgia to go to college. And this is another thing I love about Johns Creek. So few of us are from Johns Creek proper. We are from other cities in this area, other states, perhaps other countries. And neither of my parents went to college, but they really valued education and taught us that we needed to work hard and go to school. So I accomplished that by going to Edna Scott College with a scholarship. And after that, I went to Georgia State University College of Law. So I feel that people talk about what's the identity of Johns Creek? I think it's education, I think it's a value in education. Whether you have lived in this country for four years or you're like my dad's family, who were Pennsylvania Dutch that have been here for 400 years, your American dream is the same. You want what's best for your family, and the way we accomplish that is through education. So valuing education and remaining a city that can attract young families that want to raise their children here and focus on the schools is very important to me. So going back to me, I went to Georgia State College of Law. I chose it because it had a part-time program. And my parents had made very clear that they couldn't support me financially in school. So Georgia State has a part-time program where you can work full-time and go to law school. It takes you four years instead of free to do it, but I chose to do that so that I wouldn't incur a lot of student debt. Despite the hecticness, the hectic chaos that is working full-time and going to law school part-time, I managed to graduate in the top of my class and the hard work ethic and the time management skills and the analytical skills that I learned over those four years would be a great benefit to city council, where you work full-time and then also work full-time, technically part-time, but we all know it's not part-time, on behalf of city council. And after I graduated law school, I worked for two years at the Federal Court of Appeals, the 11th Circuit, which is the court right below the US Supreme Court that governs Southeastern region. And then went into private practice where I worked on, I graduated during the recession from law school, which is like the worst time, the market taint. And the firm couldn't hire two full attorneys, so they hired me as two half attorneys. And so I worked in the property division and in the employment division, which is a little bit unique, but it gave me a lot of experience. And on the property side, I worked on a lot of different types of cases that would be relevant to the work of city council. I have sued Georgia Department of Transportation in a condemnation matter. I have represented homeowners in stormwater litigation. I have worked on commercial dispossessors and negotiating commercial leases. And then on the employment side, which was actually really my passion, I worked representing state and local government employees who witnessed fraud, waste, or abuse in government and then were retaliated against for exposing it. So in that process, I learned a lot about city and county governance, but most importantly, I learned a lot about government transparency and ethics. So that is a lot about me, and I think we should get to the questions. Thanks, Tom.
The first question is, what is your position on changing State Road 141 to six lanes?
Have you noticed everyone takes a deep breath before answering this one? As I've said, I want to live here for 30 years. I am looking towards the future and I'm thinking long-term. In 2049, does anyone in this room really think that Melup Bridge will still be four lanes? I don't think that it will be. That being said, we're not at the point today where there's a political will in this city, where the community wants that to happen. The question is, where's the tipping point and when's it gonna happen? Is it gonna be in 20 years, is it gonna be in 10 years, is it gonna be in 15 years? I don't know. And once that happens, it's gonna take five years to build it. Which, so this is a long man-tracking answer to say, I'm not categorically opposed to it, but I'm very aware that at this point in time, the city doesn't want it. The community seems to not want it.
The second question is, what is your position on the five proposed options for State Bridge Road and 141 intersection?
So, I have been critical of the city council at times because I feel that they are, they drive their feet and they don't make decisions practically. And this one, I give them a bit of a pass, because this is a really hard decision. 100,000 people go through this intersection every day, I believe, and so efficiency is so important. But at the same time, 600 homes in this neighborhood are just trying to get a jug of milk at the Publix. So that balancing act is very tricky. And although I've watched the work sessions, I've read the plans, I haven't come to a decision yet on which plan I support. If they haven't made that decision by the time I'm on council, or maybe they'll be on alternative seven rate by then. Obviously, I would spend a lot of time with the traffic studies and speaking to staff and the other council members to try to balance all of the issues and come to a decision.
Third question is, what is your position on stormwater management, particularly with regard to neighborhood retention and detention ponds?
So I was curious how many people in this room live in Melup Bridge, just as a gauge of this question. Okay, so maybe about half? If you don't live in Melup Bridge, or if you do, how many of you are stressed out about stormwater? Because everyone in this room should be stressed out about stormwater, if you live in Johns Creek, in my opinion. As it relates specifically to Melup Bridge, I did talk to environmental attorneys and stormwater professionals around the state, trying to get a handle on what can we do in this particular situation. Unfortunately, the attorneys seem to unanimously agree that it would violate the gratuities clause for the city to get involved in specifically with your detention pond. If you've heard differently, please let me know. I would like to hear your opinion on it. That being said, what they talked about, which I think is a citywide problem, is flow calculations, when these neighborhoods were developed, like your pond, were dependent on a different watershed than what we have now insofar as the development level. Probably at the time that your flow calculation in your pond was made, you did not have a gigantic sea of asphalt in the Egg Harbor Cafe parking lot. So what can we do as a city, and the city probably has some obligation, in trying to mimic the original flow calculation and manage stormwater? How are we going to pay for that? And that's why I get back to, everyone in the city should be concerned about stormwater. It's like knowing you have a leak in your roof and you're not sure if it's a $500 patch or a $20,000 roof replacement. The city council has funded the $850,000 stormwater assessment that will help us know the scope of the repairs that need to be done. And I'm really worried, because I'm an attorney and a control freak and always think worst case, that it's gonna be extremely expensive and we don't have the money to fix it. So, having done a lot of research, having talked to city managers in other cities, I'm leaning towards a stormwater utility fee, which is a fee that is paid based on the impervious service on your, in your property. So every single person in this room is contributing to our stormwater problem. Every single person has a roof and a driveway and drives on roads. They contribute to that. I know no one wants to pay more taxes, but it's not a tax, it's a fee that represents the fact that we all have to use the city infrastructure for the stormwater. Just like every time you take a shower or flush your toilet, you're putting water into the sewer system and you pay county, about the 10-minute mark?
Yeah.
Okay.
That'll do.
Okay. So the last thing I'll say about this stormwater utility fee that is very interesting is that government entities, including schools, can be required to pay it because it's not a tax. Wilson Creek, Melup Bridge, Johns Creek, none of them, the high school, the elementary schools, none of them pay property taxes just by using our stormwater facilities. And a utility fee is a fee, not a tax, and so they would actually be responsible for that and all the impervious services that they create. Thanks.
The fourth question, the city charter states the mayor and council members cannot have discussions of vote count discovery, how each may vote on a specific item on the upcoming agenda for the work session or the city council meeting. Do you think if elected, you can follow the charter on this subject?
So, I found this question very interesting. In my representation of government employees, we actually had a case that was exactly this issue. I didn't believe it was in the charter, so I checked. I couldn't find it in this section about the composition of a city council or in the voting powers or voting procedures. I could be wrong, but in any event, it is absolutely governed by the Open Meetings Act, which is state law that prehumps the city charter in any event. And so the state law requires that city council to act not to engage in this behavior. And if I could very quickly give you all an example of what this would be, it would be like, I have my city center bill, I'm so excited about it. And I go to Judy and I say, Judy, will you please vote on my city center bill? And she says, well, I'm concerned about the traffic issue. If you fix that, I'll vote for it. I say, okay, great. So then I call up Isser and say, Isser, Judy says she'll vote on my bill if I fix the traffic thing. Will you vote on it? And she says, well, I'm concerned about stormwater. Check in with Tom, see what he says. And then I check and say, hey, council member Tom, will you vote on my bill if I do the stormwater? And he says, sure, tell Isser I say yes. What did I just do? I just had a discussion with four members of the city council, the constituted quorum, and I violated or circumvented the Open Meetings Act. And I deprived all of you, the residents, of the ability to know what we were talking about, what was important to us. And like I said, I had a client that was saying that the county commission in a different county in the state was doing exactly that. So I'm very familiar with these issues and I absolutely agree that it's wrong. I think it's bad governance, in addition to be probably violating the state law. Thank you.
Isser Yang, you're up next.
Hi guys, and thank you guys. Thank you, Tom and Melup Bridge for putting this together. Thank you guys for coming here. I really like to see the engaged voters coming out and learning more about us. And I appreciate everyone coming out, like I said. So about, about four years ago, I started watching and attending some city council meetings. And then I've also been walking and meeting a lot of different residents. And one of the things I realized is, you know, some of the takeaways I got was the fact that you guys want a strong, independent leader that's gonna represent you on city council. You're also going to want someone that has, you want vision for your city. You want to have a vision for the city that includes infrastructure, parks, arts, community. You want to improve your quality of life. You also want to have transparency and you want to have fiscal responsibility. I am that person that will do that for you. So, I can tell you a little bit about myself. I graduated from Georgia Tech. I was a project manager for MetLife and for AXA Financial. I, I don't like to talk a lot about myself, but I can tell you that I did a lot of projects with them. I was part of, I actually started and led the, their rewards and recognition program. I did their town halls. I also was championing for customer experience. I, you know, did the workflow. I did a lot of different projects and I still work with one of the guys that I used to work for. And now I'm an independent consultant working for them. And about 20 years ago, so I still have those relationships with these people. And I work now with a lot of different insurance and financial groups. And I have the financial know-how and also have the ability to work well with others. But more importantly, I'm going to be a good steward to you and I'm gonna advocate for you as an individual. And then, you know, during the whole time that I was working, I also was in my mom. And so I also continued to participate in my children's activities. So I was a teen parent for my kids in lacrosse cheer. And then my daughter ended up cheering for Johns Creek and they were, you know, state level champions. And I was a board member and then we won state, so that was kinda neat. Had to throw that in. And then, but more importantly, you know, I've also, I've lived here for, in and around this area for about 30 years. And I've raised my children here, my parents live here. I'm invested in this community. I really, really love this community and I really want to represent you. So, you know, like I said, more importantly, I really wanna talk about what you guys want and what we can bring to the table. I don't, I don't know if you realize, but you guys are the most, you know, the smartest, really smart, really totally engaged individuals and residents. And one of the things is that I always, I've always said that as residents, you have, you are our greatest asset and resource. So I don't know if you realize that part of the reason why we talk about stormwater is because you have someone like a Mr. Tom Corrigan here, who talks about stormwater. He's the one that has brought that on to the stage of Johns Creek. And the reason why we have, it is a major line item in our budget. It's because of engaged residents. That's what you have. You know, you also have traffic manager, I mean a traffic, a true traffic engineer that they hired about six months ago. And once again, it was because of an urging, urging from a resident here in Melup Bridge, who actually is kind of a geek about it. And I've talked to him about traffic quite a bit. And I will tell you that he is urged that, had that put in place. And the reason why you have a traffic engineer and the reason why 141 is not nearly as bad as it used to be, you know, that continues right-hand turn lane is put in there, why your optimization of your intersections are in there is because you have incredible residents that are here, that are engaged, that we can take advantage of and use as our resource. And, you know, the other thing is, we also want, you know, at the end of the day, we want a vision for our city. We want quality, quality, quality life. And you know what we want is to do, to put the, to put the vision together. We want to be able to make it easier for us to get to work. We want to make it easier for us to get to the restaurants, to the park, to the city center. So, you know, we want to do all of that and we want to make sure that we do well. And we want to be proud of our city. So I'm listening to you, I want to be that voice. I wanna take your actions to council. And I want to be able to be your advocate. You know, so that's why I'm here and I am, and I want to represent you.
First question, what is your position on changing State Road 141 to six lanes?
That would be a no for me, only because right now, it's not required, it's not necessary. I know they talk about that it's, you know, we've got 100,000. And I will tell you that that's a number that you hear a lot. But I actually went to the GDOT site. And that GDOT site tells you that there's 50,000 coming here east to west and then there's 40-something, oh, I'm sorry, 50,000 going north and then it's 44,000 going east to west. So it is about 94,000. But again, those numbers are inflated because it's just at the intersection. And if you think about when you're driving, and if you go a little bit north of it, the numbers go down. And if you go a little bit south of it, the numbers are still high down there near the Jones Bridge 141 intersection. But that's also because they're not fixing that intersection. But if you fix that intersection and you fix, and ours is being fixed as it is right now, and it can get better, we don't need that four lanes.
Second question is, what is your position on the five proposed options for State Bridge Road and the 141 intersection?
The five proposed, I actually pulled that report also. So that was like, it was from Royal Turn, it was like 12 pages and there was 35 different options. And then they came out with five total, you know, five options at the end. And, you know, one was for quadrants, one was for the, I can't remember, the overpass or whatever, and then Michigan U-turn, Michigan through U. And it's kinda like, they throw in all these crazy ideas, then the only one that looks good is Michigan through U. But it's not, none of it's good. I don't think any of those solutions are correct. Let's go back to the drawing board and actually work with a real traffic engineer.
Number three, what is your position on stormwater management, particularly with regard to neighborhood retention and detention ponds?
Well, and I've, and I've listened to you for several years. But you know what, that's, that's the reason why we need to look to you as a resident for resource, because sometimes our residents know best, right? So, and I'm not saying that we are always correct, but we need to work together. So one of the things I would say about the stormwater is, it hasn't been managed. We, we have too many impervious surfaces and it does, you know, the schools are actually one of the biggest, they're, you know, our biggest culprit. But, you know, we can at least do other things to help out and then also put, it shouldn't be, the onus should not be on the residents. If you go, and I know that when I went walking and I was inside, I don't think it was inside, I can't remember the neighborhood, but at the end, one of the neighbors showed me their backyard and said, look at this. It is a raging storm down there. It's awful. And, and you know, and they're in a small neighborhood, Melup Bridge, I think you guys are having to raise your HOAPs for that, to cover it. And it should not be the onus of the residents. It should be the onus of the city to make sure that this doesn't happen to you. So, you know, I, I think there needs to be things put in place to make sure that we, we cover it. You know, the protocols need to be changed so that, you know, new development comes in, we have, you know, permeable pavers and we, we actually put in swells, swells, I think is what they're called. And, you know, we, we need, there's, there is technology, there's, there's new ways, new pavers to put in so that going forward, this doesn't happen. But we also need to make sure that whatever's happened already, we need to make sure that we have protocols put in place to help out.
The fourth question is, the city charter states the mayor and council members cannot have discussions of vote count discovery, how each may vote on a specific item on the upcoming agenda for the work session or the city council meeting. Do you think if elected, you can follow the charter on this subject?
Yes, absolutely. That's something that, you know, we, and I, and the great example, actually Erin gave a great example, so I don't have to go into great detail, but absolutely. Because it would not be fair for one person to, is typically you have one person that's going to be a little bit more, more independent and it's gonna have, that may, may be more persuasive than others. And it shouldn't be, it should be based on what you've done, what you've researched and what you've reached out to the residents, to, to the city manager, whoever, but not talk about it amongst yourselves.
Thank you very much. Judy?
Good evening. Thank you all for being here this evening. Thank you, Tom, for putting this together and the Melup Bridge HOA. I greatly appreciate this opportunity to talk to you. My journey to tonight started before we were even a city. I had a developer wanting to come in and put in a mixed-use development in my backyard, quite honestly. And to this date, I have a wonderful, beautiful, commercial-sized detention pond that I get to look at all winter long. He paid and agreed for me, what a favor. Anywho, he cleared the land, did the infrastructure, left, came back after we got our city hood and wanted to do high-density apartments, mixed-use with a little restaurant. At this point, all of his surrounding neighborhoods said, no, not gonna happen here. So I followed him, kept an eye on him. I knew he was kind of a slippery fella, so I did my due diligence, kept all the neighborhoods informed. Through that process, my HOA president nominated me to the Johns Creek Community Association Board of Directors. After a year on the board of directors, the board nominated me as their president. So I took on that role. Now all of a sudden, I had residents from all over contacting me going, what do you think about this? What do you think about that? So from time to time, I would have to go, whoa, wait a minute. I now represent a lot of people. When the district rolled out, my membership said, no, not here, not now. No way, no thank you. It was too much at once. So I facilitated a meeting between my board of directors first, the city manager, and the mayor. And we had a whole list of questions that we presented to have them answer, to present to our membership at a structured meeting. Yeah, the city showed up and didn't have answers, so it didn't go very well for them. So, we get to the Michigan U-turn, the first time they tried to roll that out, wasn't happening for us then either. You know, and then even through that, you know, we had the issue, when billboards were still being a major issue for folks. I actually had to turn that over to my board of directors at the time because my husband had had a heart attack. And so I had to step back and let them handle it. And they did, it was great. So that shows that, you know, I've done different things throughout the city. But while that, my husband and I have lived here for 22 years. I have a 20-year-old son and an 11-year-old son. I love where we live. I love OC Park and what it has become. Thank you to those who helped get the turf fields. I love that they can play in the rain now. It's nice, we don't have delay for the season to start or begin or get through to playoffs. So that's excellent. Yes, I have enjoyed volunteering. Whether or not everybody has agreed with everything I've done, that's to be seen. I've seen things now where people who used to love me, not so much, but that's okay. Opinions change and I get that, and I'm fine with that. But I am here to, you know, help lead the city, work with every member on council because at some point, I have worked with every member currently seated on council. And there are times, you know, the mayor would talk to me and then he wouldn't talk to me. And so we just kind of agree to disagree and move projects forward. I left the JCCA in May of 2017 to pursue helping my professional association pass a state law. I worked for four years, sacrificed my own private practice for this. The bill was passed this last May, the governor signed it. We were at the ceremonial signing and that was wonderful. So I left that day going, what do I do with this knowledge? I've learned how city works, I've learned city staff, I've learned how processes in the city go. So why don't I maybe consider running for city council? So in April, I had made up my mind to run for city council and waited to see if we were going to have all the incumbents running, one incumbent decide not to rerun, and where it played out. So when Mr. Broadbent decided he was not going to run for city council and put in his notice, I waited nice 24 hours, talked to my family again, said, guys, are you sure you're, hey, if I do this? And they said, yes, absolutely, go for it. you sure you're okay if I do this?" And they said, "Yes, absolutely, go for it." So, I sent in my press release that I would be running for post six. So, here I am today. Questions?
First question is, what is your position on changing State Road 141 to six lanes?
So, that's an interesting one. I did grow up just on the other side of the river, in what's now P Street Corners. So, I remember that intersection is a four-way style and pasture, cows on all four corners. And I can remember going up to my parents' property, they live up by the carwell now, and the big power poles had just been put in, and I went, "Wow, what are the cows doing today?" And I knew things were getting ready to change, and they have changed and grown. I don't, right now, don't want to see it, but I do realize it's the state road. And when the state says, "We're going to give you six lanes," they're going to give us six lanes. I can remember a few years back, in a city council meeting, the Public Works Director at the time stating, "The pavement's already there. It just needs to be restripped, maybe edged a little better, but they're ready to go." So, my concern with where we're at and how we keep pushing back, pushing back, is that we're going to end up where Alpharetta is today with the Georgia 400 interchange. They were late to the party, GDOT said, "Guess what, we're doing it our way." You know, I think it's important that we maintain and keep certain relationships at the state level that we have fostered. We need to work with our surrounding neighbors on traffic issues, so when Forsyth is ready, we're ready, P Street Corners is ready, and on down the corridor. The idea is to keep traffic moving, not create bottlenecks in places of stoppage.
Second question is, what is your position on the five proposed options for State Bridge Road and 141 intersection?
So, you have to say I had fought against the Michigan U-turns. That's not on my list at all. I understand there's an option where they're looking at more of a throughput. You know, again, as I look at them, I see pros and cons to every side. So, this is where I think we would have to work together as a council and come to some sort of a consensus with the community about what's going to work best for everybody. We do have residents here that want to move and get where they want to go, but we also have businesses that want to thrive and prosper. So, I'm kind of waiting to see what shakes out, because I know right now they're looking at combining a couple of the options.
Third question is, what is your position on stormwater management, particularly with regard to neighborhood retention and detention ponds?
Right. So, city council just put through the stormwater assessment. I'm curious to see what they came back with for that. As I was leaving the JCCA, I think we had uncovered there was an issue where, for years after we became a city, Fulton County was still cleaning out retention detention ponds for neighborhoods that no longer had HOAs. I live in a community where we have an HOA, part of our dues pay for that, and they keep it up. There are neighborhoods that the HOAs timed out on, they didn't keep their HOA, Fulton County would go in and clean them out. And, yeah, we started having people contact us, because they've got this HOA, there's a padlock, full property of Fulton County, maybe not in select anymore. So, I think when we look at the stormwater assessment, we need to consider what we decide to do for one, we should do for all. And so, if we're going to help, you know, Medlock Bridge, then we need to help everybody else, and we need to look at it. Because I know when Medlock Bridge was originally zoned and built, these were regional detention ponds. But you have to remember Fulton County was still zoning and letting builders build and develop without regard to what was here and what it could or could not take.
And the last question is, the city charter states, "The mayor and council members cannot have discussions of vote count discovery, how each may vote on a specific item on the upcoming agenda for the work session or city council meeting." Do you think if elected, you can follow the charter on this subject?
Okay, so, when you take your oath of office, you swear to uphold the charter, Constitution of Georgia, and the Constitution of the United States. That should be the end of discussion. This should not be an issue for anybody. They should be able to maintain that and any other thing that comes along. It's in the charter as far as how you run your meetings. You don't talk about your votes. You don't, I didn't do it on planning commission. You know, we sat there, we all had to listen to the information that was brought before us and make our decisions based on that.
Thank you. Okay, so, now just, just, we'll start with Erin, and then go, I'll just go the way you lined up that year, giving you that issue.
Use your mic.
Sorry. How, the question is, how much time do you think it will take to prepare for council meetings, and how much time do you have to dedicate to the task?
So, I think there was a similar question asked at the post-two forum, which was, "How much time do you think it will take you to do city business each week?" So, I've been thinking in that regard. If it's about how much it's going to take per meeting, I haven't thought that through exactly. However, I talked earlier in my introduction about my experience in law school, working full-time while going to law school, and to show that I really like to, I like to read a lot, and I'm a fast reader, and my reading comprehension and analytical skills are good. So, I think that I will be able to do that work efficiently, and I'm really excited to get a briefing book. That doesn't answer the question of how much time it's going to take. I don't know, it's going to take hours. I wouldn't, I'm going to answer the other question, so I'm sorry, because I haven't thought about, because I think it depends what's on the topic, how long the agenda is, how complicated the issues are, but I expect that the work of city council will probably take 30 hours a week. I do.
Judy, I'll repeat it.
Thank you.
How much time do you think it will take to prepare for council meetings, and how much time do you have to dedicate to the task?
Okay, so, having served on planning commission, depending on the caseload we had, how in-depth and detailed the cases were, it can vary from anywhere from five to 20 hours for planning commission. So, looking at council, you can go anywhere from maybe another 20 to 40 hours, depending on what is on the agenda and what's ahead. And honestly, too, I think it depends on how well you've been keeping up on what's going on. And, you know, like I've said for years, you know, when I started going and attending the work sessions and council meetings, I learned that the magic happens in those work sessions. You know, so by the time they get to the council meetings, they've had their presentations and are pretty well versed on what's going on. And yes, having a private practice, I am able to have that time to do that.
Isher, I'll repeat for you. How much time do you think it will take to prepare for council meetings, and how much time do you have to dedicate to the task?
Absolutely, it's going to take, it's going to vary based on what's on the agenda and what's coming up, and what we have to fight for, for our residents. You know, every two weeks, you have at least eight hours that you have to spend in council. So, you've got the executive work session, you know, pick up a packet, or actually pick it up earlier, but you have to get there, work with the executive work session. The council meeting usually is two hours for executive, council meeting is anywhere from three to five hours, sometimes even longer. I've been there till midnight. And then they have the executive work session afterwards. So, there is, you know, that right there is a lot of time, but you also have to spend time to read, to understand the issues, and keep up with them. So, that's, you know, anywhere from, I would assume, anywhere from at least 10 to 30 hours a week. And for me, I'm going to be an empty nester next year, so I will have the time and I will make the time. And, but not only that, the council, it's not just the meetings, it's also keeping up with everyone and getting, and staying involved with the residents and understanding what the issues are, because they change all the time.
Judy, we'll start with you. Is there any policy you disapprove, you would like to change?
There are a few. Are we talking charter policy, city policy, business policy?
I'm just reading what was written.
Yeah, so if somebody who wrote that question could stand up and give me a little more...
City policy.
Okay, city policy around...
See, most of the time you have is, made a discussion, but no outcome is there. So, on that kind of issue, which way, where do you fall? Apparently, there's a lot of logjam in the city council currently.
Right, okay.
There's a lot of issues which have started.
Yeah, so I think it's important that every member show up prepared and ready for the meeting, know what the issues are at hand. You know, it is one of these things where we want to hear from you, we want to work for you, we want to work with you, but at the end of the day, we have to make the hard decision about, okay, this is what's in front of us, you know, staff is waiting for us to make a decision to move this project forward. You know, bless your heart, guys, back there in the back city council. You know, you've talked with Public Works about roads, and it's ready to move to engineering, move it to engineering, so things go forward. Let's get some stuff going, get the drawings done. Engineering is where they're going to tell you, "Hey, yeah, we can do this, and it will look like this," or "We're going to have to move this," then you get to decide. Let's go back and tweak some things. But that's, you know, as far as policy change, it's, yeah, it's time to move things and have a gentleman's agreement amongst everybody to make things happen in an efficient manner.
Isher, I'll go ahead and give the order you say. The question is, is there any policy you disapprove, you would like to change?
That's a, that is a very, it's a big question, and it's hard, but that's what we're here for, right? So, some of the things about, you know, maybe it's more about the fact that we also need a strong city manager, you know, honestly. We have had two, they've both been let go, and we need someone with a strong, strong leadership that sets the policy for us and actually works with us, so that we have a strong city, so that we're not having these indecisions that are coming in. You know, that's one. And then some, you know, another thing is to make sure that we work well with others and that we are, we have all the information, all the facts in front of us. It's also transparency. I think we talk, I talk a lot about that, because we don't have enough of it. And if we had the transparency, then we wouldn't have some of these backlogs and some of these issues that people having to come and gather together because they didn't know about something until the very end, or until, you know, until like two weeks before, and then we're sending out emails and blasting out next-door neighbor and asking everyone to show up. But if we had the transparency, if we had the discussion, the dialogue before, we would not have as many policy issues. And hopefully, we have, we will have a good city manager. But I, you know, in general, I think we are a pretty well-run city. I just think that there's always, there's always something better that we can do. So, not knocking on anything we do here, I'm just saying that we can always be better.
I'll repeat the question. Is there any policy you disapprove, you would like to change?
So, we kind of have two different questions, and I'll answer the question as written. And it's not specifically policy per se, but it is the outlook that manifests itself in policy of the current city council, and that is not funding arts and culture in the city. I think that the city should be more supportive of arts and culture, because it's a benefit to the community, so.
Isher, you're going to lead this one off. Do you think city services should be the responsibility of city worker or private companies?
So, a good example would be...
Let me ask it differently. Would you eliminate the contracted department of Public Works and bring it in-house?
And that would be the example that I was going to use, because that was the one that I know best, and it's, Public Works is currently contracted out, and it's been contracted out since day one, and it's actually the same company, it's just renamed. And the thing is, they're a third party. They are, their, their bottom line is to make money for themselves. They're not there to represent you or me. They're actually there to represent themselves. And their bottom line is making sure they have black underneath, not a red, you know, not to have, actually to make more money. So, I know that's a long way to say it, but I absolutely would like to at least bring them in-house, absolutely.
I got it, thank you. And I agree with Isher. I understand why it was the way that the city had to be implemented initially. I lived in Sandy Springs at the time Sandy Springs became a city, and it was the same thing. But I think we're past that now. I think that it's much better to have the oversight directly, and I think that there's a perception, perhaps a reality, but definitely perception of conflicts of interest, and that would be eliminated if the employees were city employees and fiduciaries of the city rather than employees of a private company.
No, I think I got it. I think we're good. Yes, so I would say, yeah, we should bring that in-house, but we can't do it the way they did ComDeb. When they brought community development in-house, it was near disaster. Can we, can we say that? Is that okay if I say near disaster? Because you had staff that was shifted and moved, and they weren't prepared to take certain positions. We've lost staff, and when you lose staff like that, you lose that historical knowledge and data of what has happened. And I'm sorry, we got some road projects coming up, and I don't know that we would want to even consider losing the people who are involved in that today.
Yes, Erin, you're going to lead this one. And I didn't write this one. How do we get Fulton County to participate in our stormwater solution?
Oh.
I didn't write it.
So, coincidentally, I reached out to Liz Housman and said, "How does Fulton County fit into this piece of the puzzle?" And was informed that Fulton County has no responsibility for our stormwater. So, I don't know the answer to that, and would still rely on the fact that we, as residents, contribute to this problem, and we need to be finding the solutions, and recognize that we all participate in it, that it's not a Medlock Bridge problem, it is a city-wide problem, that we need a city council to be focused on.
I'll repeat for you, Judy. How do we get Fulton County to participate in our stormwater solution?
How do we get them to participate? And Liz says that it's our problem. I think maybe we look at fostering a relationship, a better relationship with Fulton County to see, maybe there's not a way we could make something happen. I don't like it when people say, "Yeah, it's never going to happen." Well, if you keep knocking on the door, maybe somebody will answer it one day and say, "Yeah, you know?" But I think they need to see that we have taken on some of that responsibility and not just want to pawn it back off onto them. I think if we lay out a case of, like what I had said about the detention ponds, where Fulton County took care of them for years, you know, you guys kind of, you know, gave us the gift of keepsgiving, we'll say that. So, no, it's, yeah. But yeah, so, yeah, it's, I, you know, I don't see that everything is just a no. You have to keep asking and keep trying, you know, and we have to be creative in our solutions sometimes.
Isher, do you need to repeat it?
No. And it is unfortunate that Fulton County can't do anything right now. Maybe they can, hopefully we, you know, I agree that we can still keep trying and not give up. You know, there's also things that, you know, they can do, and it doesn't have to be necessarily money necessarily, although it would be nice, but it would be something like putting in protocols in place, having them making sure that they have protocols that help us as a local municipality, so that we are not always having to deal with the negative impacts of stormwater. So, you know, let's make sure that we all work together to have protocols that put in place that actually work for us.
Okay, Judy, you lead this off. These two questions are, in a second, because I'm going to use it as one. Let me see which one I like. Okay. Do you think the city council seats should be assigned geographically, so all areas are represented, and the other just basically, you know, should be assigned by the district?
Right, okay, so...
Right now, we're at large.
Right, right now...
I think it should change.
Right, right now, we are at large, and as I've talked with other people, other municipalities, they kind of know we're backwards. No, I think at the time, they looked at our population...
No, I think at the time, they looked at our population and where we had areas that were a little more populated than others. So we're reaching that tipping point, I believe, to actually look at doing it by district. And I think that's why they had set up one through six. And it'll be interesting to see how and when we get to that point. You know, I know, you know, a lot of people, when I'm out walking and talking, they're like, okay, so what, what area are you? And I'm like, I'm at large, so you get to vote for three seats, three people, and this is how, how it goes. I'm like, oh, okay. Okay. So it's, it's interesting to see. But yeah, I think we're, we're gonna hit that around the 100,000.
Isher, do you need an explanation?
Uh, no, I think it's... Do, I, you know, that is a great question. Unfortunately, I don't know the right answer for it right now. I do know that it is confusing for residents sometimes when you, like I, like Judy and I go out or when I'm meeting people, and they don't quite understand that, one, there's three posts that are up. There are three, you know, three posts that are up and there's, each one of us, maybe, I'm running against Judy and Erin, but I'm not running against two and four. So they don't quite understand that. And the other thing is, you know, it, it, it's the at-large, but it is kind of nice to be representing. I think that you, for me, I want to represent everyone on, in Johns Creek, and it is nice. But I do get where if you have someone from your area, they can be your advocate, a bigger advocate for you. So I think it's really gonna depend on what the residents want, if they think that there's a need for it.
Do you need to repeat?
Good, thank you. So I'll echo what Judy and Isher already said. I've had conversations with people about this, and I would like to do more research and actual studies on the pros and cons. But generally speaking, one thing about having a district is that you get a little bit more attention. I live in the southern part of Johns Creek in Rivermont, and we feel a little bit neglected sometimes over there because City Hall is all the way and Shake Rag on the other end, Technology Park. But that being said, the problem with districts is, you know, say I represented the Rivermont District, I maybe wouldn't be as attentive to the Shake Rag issues. Of course, I would be, because I would be a good public servant. But, you know, that would be the potential conflict that you would have. So, but when everything, we have an email address that is like city council, all city council email address, and it goes to all of them. And you know how it is, when everyone gets an email, who responds to the email? So having districts in that regard would maybe be beneficial because then one person knows that that's kind of their lift. But again, I think that there needs to be more research and we need to know what the residents would like.
Okay. Bear with me, it has some length, but it was sent to me over the internet. The question's, starting in the late 1980s, Georgia 400 widened in strategic sections from two lanes to four lanes each way. Today, the morning commuter trip from Haynesbridge to 285 takes as long or longer than it did prior to the widening. Often is, was an hour. Clearly, the specific goal of easing traffic congestion was not achieved with the widening. How do you, how do you relate this to the traffic congestion problems we face in Johns Creek?
That is a long question.
I, it's a little wordy, but...
But no, that's fine. It's okay. So, and, and traffic is the number one issue. And when you, when you go door to door, when you meet everyone, it's traffic, traffic, traffic. And, and there's no magic solution. And I, and I don't think I'm gonna be able to say I have a solution for traffic per se. But I want us to use, you know, technology. I want us to use what we have in place to optimize what we can do without automatically defaulting to adding a lane and changing the character of our city. You know, that's one of the things that I want to at least look at, what we can best do for, for our area, our intersections, pressure plates, synchronization, optimization, there's all sorts of things we can do. And also, in 10 to 15 years, it may change. You know, they say that we're gonna have more people. But then more people are gonna work from home, maybe, you know, we're gonna have autonomous cars. So it's hard to determine what the future's gonna hold. I know that they're actually doing that outer rain, outer ring, you know, where the McInnisberry is gonna be, and that's gonna actually help with traffic. It's not gonna be, it's not gonna be a huge bump, it will help. You know, when they did, when they did 400, it actually helped our area. There was a bump or a, a significant decrease in traffic. So, we, unfortunately, we can't stop people from wanting to move here because we live in a great place. So, of course, we want to live here, and, and people want to live near us because we live in a fantastic city. But, you know, we can't stop the creep, but we can at least try to manage it the best way possible. And I would like for us to at least use our technology and the people and the power that we have first before we just defaulting to adding lanes.
Any help, please, please?
No, thank you. So the question's getting at the concept of induced demand, even though it doesn't say that out, right? Which is that if you widen the road, that traffic isn't like a liquid. The idea is, in some people's mind, that traffic is like a liquid. If you expand the, the width of the roads, it fills it, it has more space to go through and it can go through it more efficiently. But some traffic engineers believe in the theory of induced demand, which is when you widen the road, the traffic is actually like a gas and it will take as much space as you give it. And that, over the short term, you may experience better traffic, but over the long term, more people will realize that that's a good road to take and there's actually more cars on the road than there were before the widening. I am not a traffic engineer. You talk to one and they tell you induced demand is a myth. You talk to another, they tell you that it is statistically sound. I don't have a decision, and that's one of the reasons I'm conflicted on Medlock Bridge. I really like to make evidence-based decisions and I, you hear both sides of the science. So I need to spend more time with traffic engineers to make a decision. I would disagree with the premise of the question, though, about the 1980s to now with traffic because North Fulton exploded in the 1990s in growth. And Forsyth County is continuing to grow. It's gonna double in size in the next 15 years. Fulton County, North Fulton, built 30 schools between 1998 to 2008. So clearly, the growth on 400 is not just because the road widened, it's because the population growth was exponential. But possibly also because of induced demand, if that's true.
Good.
So I'm not gonna make you run through the whole thing again. So, yeah, and let's run through the part you said, from Haynesbridge to the perimeter was how long?
He basically said that today, the morning commute from Haynesbridge to 285 takes longer and longer. He says often as long as an hour.
Okay, right. And so, to Erin's point, you had all of these other areas booming and growing and feeding into 400, which is what, as a city, we need to be smart with our growth in doing a master plan that feeds the zoning, the traffic, the stormwater body. It looks at all of it. That way, when a developer comes in, they have product X, and we can tell them, okay, product X fits best over here. That will help control the growth along our 141 corridor, along State Bridge as well, and any other little area that we think is becoming a little more too busy in traffic than it should. So I think that that is what we need to look at. You know, and just really do intelligent, meaningful growth in the city through a master plan.
I think you're up next, Judy, so hang on for a minute. What is your opinion on affordable housing?
My opinion on affordable housing?
I'm just reading.
No, no, that's, that's a very interesting question. Dear friend of mine, she actually rents the home in her neighborhood, and she loves it. She loves being there. It's affordable for her. But she will tell you first up, she would not be able to buy a house in our neighborhood. So where do we go with affordable housing? You know, there, there are pockets of areas, I know in Rivermont, they have some Section 8 housing in the colony. I know that there are multiple apartment complexes that were actually built before we were a city that are still around. But I know from talking to people who live in those, because I bought my house 23 years ago, my house payment in it is not as much as what they pay in rent. So that's what's affordable for me. You know, it's kind of, I need a qualifier, what's, what's considered affordable. No, I mean, we, we're a popular place, people want to live here, people want to be here. They love our schools. And yes, we want people to be here and be happy. You know, but it's kind of a, you know, again, what's affordable for me may not be affordable for Erin, or Isher may be able to afford more than both of us. So it's...
Isher, you know the question. What is your opinion on affordable housing?
My, well, you know, actually, I mean, I've been a, I've been, I've been a single parent for 17 years, actually, yeah, seven, over 17 years. And, and I think that, you know, what we can afford, what we can do is, is really on yourself. It's just whatever you can do. So is it up to us to give that, you know, have affordable housing? I, I, I don't think I'm in the position to do that. I think that we need to be, you know, self-motivated and self-able, you know, have the ability. But if you, if you can't afford it, we could help with the skill sets, help with you getting those skills to get there. But I'm, I think that, you know what? Johns Creek is a great place to live because you want to live here and you can afford it. And if you can't afford it, then you live somewhere else until you can afford to come here. So that's how you would have to do it. I mean, if I couldn't afford to live here, I would live somewhere else. And then I would work really hard, save a lot of money, and try to move here because that's, this is where I want to live. So, again, affordable housing, I don't know what that really means necessarily, except for that, you know, I can afford to live where I live. And I've, because I did buy a, a house that was condemned and everything, I had to redo it. But, you know, those are things that, you know, I did to get to where I'm at. But I guess I'm not really answering the question, but I don't think we should have to, to have affordable housing for everyone. It's, it's what we already have. People already live here and love living here. And, and make it a goal to live here. Make it something that you want to do. So, I mean, not really answering it, but I know that I've been through tough times and I know what it's like, but I also understand that you have to, you know, take, take that self-motivation and work really hard. And if you can't live here yet, you want to work, you work hard to get here.
Another question?
Thank you. I think that a healthy city would have a variety of income groups, and I think that it would be able, that people that work for the city would be able to afford housing here. And I think that a problem with not having housing that's affordable, I agree with Judy that what, what is affordable? Are we talking about a person that works in the food industry or the retail industry? Their wages are very different than, than someone who works in the professional class. But that being said, people who work here, sorry, employers in businesses, one of the reasons that they have a hard time retaining employees and building businesses here is because the workforce can't live here. And I know that that was a big debate in the last city council election. But I really do think a healthy city would have a variety, a diversity of not just culture and education levels, but also socioeconomic levels. And I don't know what the role of city council plays in that, but I do think it's something that's valuable.
It's now Isher. How will you encourage commuters to get away from single occupancy vehicles? I.e., park and ride, bike paths, multi-use trails, public transit?
How do we, there are, there are modes of, of people sharing. I know Waze has, you know, Right Ways has a, an app where you can, actually Johns Creek has it, where you can actually say, hey, I would like to share a ride with you, and then you can do that. So it is hard. I think that you, we can't tell people what to do. So I'm, I, I'm not one of those people that's gonna tell you what to do. It would be nice if people car pooled, it would be nice. But I also think that right now, we have, the, and workforce has changed a little bit. We're now working from home. I work from home 90% of the time, to be honest. So, you know, I think that we see that coming in. I don't, you know, I think we could put, you know, ask for incentives or put incentives and say, hey, it'd be great if we did. But again, it's up to the resident, it's up to each individual to make that decision.
Want to repeat?
I appreciate it.
Sure.
Thank you.
How will you encourage commuters to get away from single occupancy vehicles? For examples, park and ride, bike paths, multi-use trails, public transit?
So, it depends on if we're talking about intercity traffic or intracity traffic. Are we talking about people who are trying to get to Buckhead Midtown or Downtown to work? Are we talking about people who are just running errands or back and forth to school here in Johns Creek? Obviously, if MARTA came a lot further north up 400 or up into Gwinnett County and people were just going east-west to get to a MARTA station and would ride down-south, that would alleviate a lot of traffic on Medlock Bridge, on Jones Bridge, and on 400. So that is trying to get people out of Johns Creek. And 93% of people work outside of Johns Creek, I believe. So that would really help with that. As far as within the city, and I can't like claim credit for this, there's a candidate in post two, Rose Reinicki, and I'm not endorsing him or anything except for the fact that I love that he talks about the multimodal paths. And I think that that is excellent, and I think it's brilliant because it plays on our strengths of the fact that we still have a lot of wooded areas, we still have a lot of nature that we could be, be building trails in that would allow us to connect neighborhoods in a way that, like this neighborhood, for example, we've got Medlock Bridge on one side, Jones Bridge on the other, Abbott Bridge on this side, and State Bridge on that side. Imagine a gigantic square. And you can't really get from one side to the other, but imagine if all within it, there was a network of trails. That would be really cool. And it would allow parents to get to the schools and allow you to maybe walk to the Egg Harbor Cafe place. I think you guys might actually have a trail that goes that direction. Right, I'll leave it at that.
Hang on for a minute.
Oh, me again? Wait, did you ask that?
Is it you?
No.
Oh, I'm sorry. I said, oh, I went...
That's okay, that's okay.
I do get lost.
Right, right, no, that's fine. Yes, how do you get people out of their cars? Because, you know, when I'm driving somewhere, I've usually got a dedicated place that I'm going to. So that's kind of a difficult question. I know a lot of, you know, businesses will try to get people living in the same area, close to the same area, carpooling. Carpooling's been around for a while, but we still have traffic issues. Multimodal might be something to look at, but we have to kind of go, let's get ahead of that. Let's have a council that's proactive so we don't have all the electronic bikes and scooters laying around like other places that have tried that. It's their mess, they're cleaning it up now. And as far as like a interconnected trails, and this, that was proposed and people don't, people walking in their backyard. So what do we do? How do we? That's got to be a concerted community effort. We need people to be more community-minded and community-oriented when we look at these solutions. And until people step up and say, yes, I am for this community, I want to contribute to this community, we're gonna be stuck in the same boat. So there you go. You want me to start this next one?
Yes.
Okay.
Tonight, I heard mention of a city center. What are your views and vision of a city center? What would it consist of?
Wow, okay, that's a great question because I've heard a lot about a city center while I'm out walking and talking to people. So, people are looking for a city identity, and a city center is a place to start with that. You know, you're looking at City Hall, there's some back and forth on, we fill in the ponds, we not fill in the ponds, you know, do we keep one, do we get? Anyway, we need to look at an art center in that area because that's what I'm hearing, a lot of people want arts to develop and have that amenity to grow our city. You know, and in order to get the art center, we need a council supporting it so the arts community can go to the county, to the state, to private institutions for grant money to get what we need. Because without the support of city council, that can't happen. So, we've got our art center in place, we've got City Hall in place. I know they were looking at a zoning case to do some shops that may or may not go through depending on what council decides. There, we need to attract developers. We need to spend a little money to, you know, get money to come into us. We need people to look at us and go, yes, we are by, but we will...
We need people to look at us and go, "Yes, we are vibe, but we want the vibrancy." So, yeah, we want, you know, unique boutique shops. We want places to eat. We want to be able to do our city business there. We want to be able to meet there and have Fourth of July fireworks and listen to the John's Creek Symphony Orchestra. So that's what we're looking at. Thank you.
I'll repeat. Uh, tonight I heard mention of a city center. What are your views and vision of a city center? What would it consist of?
Uh, well, the city center is actually in the comp plan right now. And I know that we don't have it fleshed out just yet. But, you know, I, I also see an art center there. I see a community center, not just an art center, but a community center, which the art center is a big part of. You know, um, I actually grew up playing piano when I was in the orchestra. So I'm a big, I, I love arts and I love the green space. I go out, walk every day. I would like to see a lot of green space. I would like to see a park beside it. I would like to see the fact that we have an art center there where people come in and actually use it, enjoy it, get to, um, you know, enjoy the symphony, enjoy chorus, enjoy, you know, a new artist that's coming in or a display where they can also do, um, you know, the kids can go over there. And one of the things also Fulton County has taken away music as something for the elementary school. And, you know, this is something that we can actually ensure that we do, we have for the kids going forward for our future. Um, so the city center, I, I see that as a center for a lot of people. But I also want, not just a city center, but I would like to see pockets of like green space and art, uh, green space and parks for, that's going to, you know, come out to fruition for our other areas. We live, I actually live near Erin and Barnwell, off of Barnwell in, in Old Alabama, and we are kind of, we kind of are like the redheaded stepchildren. And sometimes we don't get the stuff and, and it might be harder for me to get up there, but we have Newtown and let's, you know, make sure we flesh everything out and make sure that we have centers for everyone in the city to enjoy.
Tonight I've heard mention of a city center. What are your views and vision of a city center? And what would it consist of?
Unfortunately, it might sound like a broken record because I think we tend to agree on this. I love the idea of a city center. I really want a city center. My husband, who's the most apolitical person I know, says, "Well, the only problem with John's Creek is that we don't have a city center. We don't have a downtown." And obviously, we don't have a historic downtown in the way that Alpharetta or Roswell or other cities have. And we were incorporated out of the ether in 2006. But we have some great plans, um, up by city hall. And last night we were at that awesome Chamber of Commerce event at Six Bridges Brewery. I feel like Six Bridges is currently the city center. Um, so many people had just walked there from, from the neighborhoods back there in Tac Park. And when I was talking to them, "Do you know anything about the city center plans?" These were people that didn't even know that, um, there was a Chamber of Commerce event with a bunch of politicians trying to get their vote, the poor unsuspecting people. Um, they hadn't heard of the city center plans and they thought, "How great would that be?" And as a millennial, um, we love to have outdoor spaces to congregate. I think everyone does though, really. And it would have the art center, it would have the linear park. It would be a place where we could have the arts festival and you could spend your whole day out there, walking around, going to shops, getting some food, lounging in, you know, at the park for a while and then going to see a concert in the evening. That's what I would love to see.
Uh, who led off last time?
Uh, it's your turn.
It's your turn. Okay, just wanted to make sure. Isser's right. She, she was, Erin's.
Okay. But I think I've started already several times.
Erin, you've been selected.
I have been selected.
What is, what is your opinion on the money we have spent and what we should do on the gateways in John's Creek?
Oh, my goodness. I have to admit that this is gap in my knowledge. I didn't realize it was going to be such a pressing issue. I'm sorry. Um, there's a lot of things to be researching on behalf of city council. I love the idea of the gateways. I think we are looking at ways to foster identity and bring a sense of community to the city. So I do really like the idea of the gateways, but I'm sorry that I don't have the knowledge to talk about the money part of it. So I'll leave it at that.
Now, it's what, what do I think about the money spent on the gateways and where we're at?
Basically, what is your opinion of, uh, on the money we've spent and what we should do on the gateway? Just to be fair, the money comes from the taxes, uh, the hotel tax.
Right, from CBB.
So it's technically not our money, but it is tax money.
It is tax money. Um, yeah, so, uh, I attended one of the meetings that they held for the public to kind of give some input on what we wanted to see on our gateway markers. Um, the artists had done some renderings and a couple, few of those renderings got out. And it's my understanding, because I attended the CBB meeting, that they weren't supposed to have been put out to the public because of the process. You know, there's, there was a process of, let's see, these happen to be the artist's three favorite, not necessarily CBB's three favorite, but that's what was put out. And so now it's, CBB sees it as, now we've confused the public. What's this going to do to our process? And will this cost us more money down the road? I hope not. Um, but we really need to, um, you know, when there's an organization like CBB, yes, there's a hotel motel tax. Like it, don't like it, it's whatever, it is there. It is paying for this. You know, personally, I prefer something more classic and traditional for a marker. Um, but those options are available. And, you know, now I'm, I have concern that when they come out with it, the public's going to be a little confused about, well, we saw these three, where did those go? CBB might have said, "Yeah, no, we don't want to present those three to the public, so let's move it along." And so there we go. It's kind of a, it's a, art is subjective.
Well, as a side note though, because it uses tax money, there is, uh, it is the public, open for public.
It is, it is a little more public.
Freedom of information.
Right.
Also assured, I just thought that the most recent pictures were an homage to Stormwater, to be honest.
The CBB had a process in place on how they wanted to roll it out to the public. Or, yeah, CBB wanted to roll it out to the public in a specific, very metered, measured way. And so when this got leaked out, it kind of confused some people in that community.
What's your opinion?
Okay, so actually, I think we need to kind of start back a little bit further. So the, there was discussion on the gateway markers and the discussion, but, but also it was, are we going to spend money on getting the rendering? Or are we, could we use the money for something else? Could have been for, um, you know, putting our sideways sidewalks and, and, and connecting the sidewalks? Could it be for maybe one of our, uh, parks or ring, uh, belt, beltways? No, those are things that we could also think about where that money doesn't have to go to a gateway. A gateway is a great idea in theory. However, half of the money, I think it was forty thousand dollars, was spent on one artist's rendering, which, again, we have so many artists and so many talented people in, in John's Creek. They don't know why we don't go back to the residents. And we could have said, "We have a contest. You can, and you can win, you can say in your portfolio that you actually designed the gateway markers." We, three gateway markers, you, three different people could have marked. That would have been wonderful. And we could have used those, used that money. It doesn't, it did not have to go to gateway markers. It could have gone to other things. It could have gone to the connectivity of our sidewalks, which I would love to see. I walk two to six miles every day. And I'm going to tell you, I love being outdoors and I know people are going to love it too if they can get that connectivity. So I, I, I didn't really answer the question about gateway, but I am saying that it, it's unfortunate that we didn't, we could have used that money for something else, not necessarily for a gateway. We weren't forced to use it for a gateway. I would have probably said, "Hey, let's move it to something that everyone could appreciate and, and use because people want to use sidewalks."
Erin, you started last time? We have a replay.
Judy did the question, then it, then Erin and now Isser.
So here's the question, Judy. Is it possible to entice a small grocery store to open a location on the west side of 141 between Parsons Road and State Bridge Road to divert the traffic away from the 141 and State Bridge intersection?
Is it possible to entice them? Are we offering incentives now? I...
You know, I'm just saying, they're just saying this would be a benefit to large subdivisions as well as many of the smaller ones in the area.
Right, so I know at one point, um...
We had a Food Lion, a Walmart.
Yeah, you know, we've, we've had a Walmart too. Um, and I know at one point somebody had talked about getting Trader Joe's and they won't look at us. You know, so I don't, you know, again, if a person who read the question would like to stand up and give some clarification or a little more information around it, I'd be happy to give a better answer. But I don't know how we would entice...
Want to take a shot?
Enticing, well, I, I think it may be going back to making it easier to do business at John's Creek. You know, that's, I don't know if I can necessarily only entice a grocery, a small grocery store, but at least entice businesses, small businesses. You know, they are, they are a foundation.
So let me provide clarity.
Okay.
So I work in Tac Park. I live off of that. So if I'm a grocery store, I either have to go through an innuendo to curl their products, or I've become that, I'm going to have to turn left. It's not pleasant, I'll go to Applewood, Spole Foods, I forget. There's not, there's no grocery store on the west side of 141 between Abbott Bridge and Old Abbot.
That's right. You're right.
So if I'm going to go home, it would be sweet there's something to say where Route 66 is. Because I don't know if those are on the same street. So if there's grocery, it's like... But then it's like, somebody mentioned 600 homes in another bridge. And, you know, say not, because you know how many homes are there now? Maybe you have all these other subdivisions. So if we could have something like in this area...
So you're saying that maybe we should get together and open a store for you?
It's like, nor are we diverting traffic away from that intersection. And that's just why.
From what intersection, which one?
Diverting the traffic away from that intersection.
Okay, well, can I go ahead and answer that now? Did I get your question on it?
Yes.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Now I can give you a better answer. Um, I know there was a group actually looking to do a redevelopment in that shopping center. And it was, I think, two four-story condos and, uh, yeah, you know, again, that's too much at once in that area. But your idea of a little, you know, grocery store of some sort might go. And I think if we put our master plan in place, that would show somebody like a Trader Joe's, "Yeah, you know what? The city's finally got their stuff together. Let's go here and let's set up shop here." Because there is that gap, that need that we could meet. And it would be great then to have that, you know, put it, put it where the Route 66 is because they're still having noise issues from what I'm understanding. Um, they'll take my crunch away and we like Egg Harbor. So, yeah, yeah, so do that. There, you know, and how come, I still am not quite sure other than make it easy for them to come in and say, "Yes, let's redevelop this for you. Let's get you what you need, let's get you set up." And, you know, obviously kind of plug them into the chamber if they're an independent. But if it was a Trader Joe's, that would work great for me. Want to go back at it or?
Do you want to back at it? Let Erin take a shot.
I mean, I, well, I guess I'll say a little bit more. I definitely, I definitely think that we at least want to look into making it easier to do business here in John's Creek. And, uh, a lot of times, and, and actually, my family owns some properties and we do have retail, retail shops. And I will tell you that, um, people will come to you all the time. And we've had people come in and say, "We want to open a store. We want to do that." And it's based on their research. So, you know, hopefully you can get the word out and just say, and somehow get that word out. Maybe someone will see that there is a need for it. So if there's a need, someone will, someone will come and do it. So it's, but we also want to make it, again, I just, I'm, I'm big about just making it easier to do business in John's Creek because, you know, we want places to go eat, work, you know, live, like, live, work, and play. And that's my motto.
Well, I think that the economics of grocery store chains are beyond me. Um, I would have to do some more research. But I would agree that generally speaking, we need to be promoting business and making John's Creek a good place to do business. Unfortunately, we don't have the greatest reputation. Um, I've spoken to a lot of small business owners and other people who are involved in commercial property and their concerns that John's Creek is overly restrictive. And so I would really like us to have some commercial revitalization and, um, not have an eighteen percent vacancy rate in our shopping malls or shopping centers and have them primarily filled with bake shops. I think a grocery store would be much better.
Uh, how have you handled it in the past when you've had to work with people with whom you've had disagreements?
I don't have any others. I, you know what? You can't get along with everyone. But, you know, one of the things that I, I will do is you always want to know where they're coming from. Because sometimes you and I may not agree on an issue, but if I say to you, "Oh, how did you get to that point? How did you get to your decision?" Then it helps you understand their point of view. So you also have to just be open to it. And you have to be open to saying, "Hey, I'm willing to work with you. I'm reaching out, I want to work with you." And not everyone's going to get along and not everyone's going to agree with you. I mean, I know, and this is one of the examples I always say, when people, um, ask me, you know, they'll say, first thing is, you know, "What, what party are you?" or whatever. And I always say it's nonpartisan. And they think it's important, but I also say, you know, most people on council are from the same party, but they don't agree on everything. And that's, that's the beauty of what we, we as people, we are diverse. We have different backgrounds, we have different things that make us tick and make us think. But as long as you're open and you're willing to listen and you're willing to look at everyone's point of view, that's, that's how you, that's how you work with people. That's how you work and, and try to come up with the best solution. Because I know that I don't, I may have a good solution in my mind, but it's not the best unless I'm talking to someone else and getting their opinion and getting their input. That's the only way to get better. Innovation comes from people working together and, 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 and having that discussion, that dialogue with everyone. And the other, you know, the other thing is, make, you know, I, one of the other examples I always say is, I think I just did it to you today. It's like, you guys are married, do you guys agree with each other a hundred percent? You don't. But you, you work together and to get a solution.
Erin, I'll repeat for you. Uh, how have you handled it in the past when you've had to work with people with whom you've had disagreements?
So my chosen profession is working with people that disagree with me. Um, and I think that that is the most important thing that everyone on city council needs to remember is that we're all professionals, operating in good faith and working towards a common goal. We may disagree on how to get there, but it should not, never be about ego and it should never be personal. Um, you know, when I work with opposing council, you can be in the courtroom fighting with each other, you know, arguing very strenuously, but then you go like have lunch together afterwards. Because it was never personal. afterwards because it was never personal, it was always about, I have a duty to my client, they have a duty to their client, and we're both acting out that duty the best of our ability. It has nothing to do with them personally. Now, the clients might hate each other, that's a totally different dynamic, but maintaining your professionalism, not letting your ego get involved, and understanding that we're operating in good faith are the keys, in my opinion, to a successful working relationship.
Judy, I'll repeat for you. How have you handled it in the past when you've had to work with people with whom you've had disagreements?
When I was younger, I would have to say I immediately handled it bad. Um, but as we get older, we gain certain bodies of knowledge and that is something that I have worked on. And trust me, four years in the Capitol, I had a lot of time to work on getting over issues with people that didn't want to agree with what I wanted them to do. And so you have to learn how to build those relationships, trust each other in that communication, communicate your point clearly. And I also learned how to be a better listener for learning, not just listening to answer. So it's kind of that, okay, I have a better understanding about what their objective is, I know what my objective is, and sometimes we're able to come together and sometimes you're at an impasse and you have to respectfully agree to disagree and move on and move on for the betterment of the residents and whatever it is you're trying to work out.
Okay, Isher, uh.
I think I did first.
Oh, you did, you went first, okay. This will be the last question before you run out the door. Thank you everybody for coming. Um, and I really appreciate, uh, the 22nd, Tuesday, will be, uh, post four will be here. You're all welcome to come back, okay? And we're going to do it for two hours, right? Because we have four people. And so everybody can get to the end of questions. Um, okay, so here we go. Uh, I didn't write this. Um, Judy, I think you're the first.
I know Erin's first.
Oh, Erin, okay, sorry. Uh, what is your current and/or past relationship with current and/or past members of the Atlanta Regional Commission?
I don't have any relationship with any of them. I, um, does Liz Hausman sit in some sort of advisor capacity on that or as a county commissioner or does she just work with them as a county commissioner? I don't, I don't know. I don't have a relationship with her, other than I met her last week for coffee for the first time, figuring I should learn more about Stormwater and Fulton County and how they relate. So, um, I don't have any relationship.
Okay.
Yeah, so I guess until we have the Liz question answered, I don't really have a relationship with anybody on ARC that I'm aware of.
Okay.
I don't have any, I'm sorry. I don't know anyone.
Okay. Just kind of strange, but I figured let's ask it. All right, thank you very much for coming and we all hit that. Bye.